Hi, my name is Sashi Bagore. I am the Vice Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. It's five thirty P M. And I call this meeting to to start. I am sitting in for Chair Shu today because we have because she's probably going to join us a little late. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Rochelle. What's can we put the agenda up there?
Oh, wait, Rochelle, you're on mute.
Oh.
Sorry, it looks like Chair Shu was a participant.
Yeah, I think you want to. I should just allow her to talk so she can.
Jess, can you actually promote her in?
It looks like she's in now.
Thank you.
Awesome. Chair Shu, it's all yours.
Yeah, so it looks like my computer has some problem. I cannot use the link to join this meeting. So I waited in, yeah.
That's okay. That's a great way to do it. We'll definitely look into that for future. All right, so we hadn't started anything. So if you want to start, let's see, Jess can do roll call.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
Please help us start the roll call. Thank you.
Commissioner Stanek.
Here.
Commissioner Kumarpun.
Here.
Vice Chair Bagore.
Here.
And Chair Shu.
Uh, here.
So right now, we just have Commissioner Swami absent.
Okay. Uh, so, um, let's start. We can, oh, excuse me. Now, here is what's so sorry, I have may maybe I still need Sashi Bagore to help me to um, work on the meeting because I have some network problem. I cannot see those files. Yeah, I'm still, yeah, cannot open that.
Okay, I guess the first order of business would be the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting in April. Did we not have? No, sorry. The, yeah, that's right. The approval of the Parks and Rec Commission meeting uh, April seventh. So does anyone want to make a does anyone have any comments on it? Am I looking at the? Oh, sorry, I got the wrong. I have trouble with this. Uh, I have trouble with this myself. It's opening the wrong file for the third time for me. Um, it should be the June second twenty twenty two meeting minutes, but for some reason that is opening up something else for me. Okay, there we go. Finally. Sorry about that. There's been a lot of, I've had a lot of issues today myself, so, um, wait. Okay, there we go. All right. So anyone have any comments on that, that meeting, or do you want to approve it?
No, I don't, um, but maybe we can put a motion there to approve the June second minutes of the meeting.
Did you, did you make a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion. Yeah, I made a motion to approve the June second minutes of the meeting.
And Carol, do you want to maybe, or somebody else, or I can approve, I can second it?
I wasn't there, so I will be abstaining.
Ah, you weren't there. Okay, so I can go ahead and um uh, second the motion. So maybe Jessica, you want to take a roll call? Not roll call, take a
vote.
Yeah, vote.
Okay, Commissioner Stanek.
I will abstain since I wasn't there.
Commissioner Kumarpun.
Uh, yes.
Vice Chair Bagore.
Yes.
And Chair Shu.
Uh, yes.
Motion passes with three yes and one abstain and one absent.
Okay, uh, the second area of we're gonna focus on is there's a draft minutes from the June thirteenth um, uh, special meeting commissions meeting that we have and and recreation. And would anyone like to make a motion about that meeting?
I can make a motion to approve the minutes of the June thirteen uh, joint special meeting.
Excellent.
I can second that one. I was there, so.
Okay, perfect. And are we gonna go around and figure out the vote? Jessica?
Yes. Commissioner Stanek.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kumarpun.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bagore.
Yes.
And Chair Shu.
Uh, yes.
Motion passes with four yes and one absent.
Okay, so I guess we're at this point in the meeting where um any oral communication for people that want to address this commission for any topic that is other than what's on the agenda. So it looks like we have one hand raised. Uh, so is that the correct order of things that I'm doing? Um, if so, then I will allow um, Mr. Bailey to be able to speak. Nick Bailey.
Hi there. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, thank you so much. Uh, and good evening. Uh, nice to see you again, Rochelle. Uh, Rochelle and I actually went to school for many years together. And yeah, my name is Nick Bailey. I'm here tonight just as you evaluate the survey for the BlackBerry Farms Golf Course um, and just voicing support for keeping it open. Um, I grew up in Cupertino and began playing golf at BlackBerry Farms when I was eleven. And it's a huge part of where I am today and a huge part of my life. Um, I now have three children of my own, including two boys who are eight and six. And we both get out there to enjoy multiple rounds at BlackBerry Farms Golf Course um, as it provides an excellent opportunity for them to enjoy the game. Um, just a little background on myself, you know, I am a seventeen year member of the PGA of America and also the general manager of Lake Merced Golf Club up here in Daly City. Um, I also serve on the Vice President for the Northern California PGA, and I was actually the Golf Professional of the Year um, this last year. So, um, you know, I've got a great background in golf and the game of golf has given me so much joy in my life um, that I've dedicated the last few years in particular to giving back to the game that has given me so much. Um, as a, as a Parks and Parks and Rec Division and Commission evaluates the next steps, I just want to convey that my support and willingness to help in any way possible. So I know you know, a typical city makeup, they're typically, you know, you might have a golf professional or two, but you might not have all the support you need. But I'm certainly happy to donate my time and expertise to help the Parks and Rec Commission on any short term operational issues and long term planning that is needed. Um, it's got, it's a great facility. And with my wealth of experience over twenty seven years in the golf industry, I can certainly assist with some of the easy and hard decisions that the golf course faces. Um, there are multiple ways that we can help the golf course thrive, and I think we can provide an excellent resource for Cupertino and non Cupertino residents. Um, I do think it's a huge part. BlackBerry Farms has hosted more than twenty four, twenty four hundred rounds of golf for the Youth on Course Program in twenty twenty one alone, which is a subsidized program that allows juniors to play for only five dollars, uh, making it one of the most affordable sports. And I also think that, you know, with with the rounds of golf coming out there, um, not only from Cupertino residents, but other Cupertino residents, the golf course helps support local businesses around the area. Um, and the last thing I would say is just that, you know, there seems to be a comparison between Deep Cliff and and BlackBerry and whether Deep Cliff stays open or not. I would just say that, you know, that Deep Cliff is, if I take my two sons out there on a Saturday morning, it would cost me a hundred and fifty three dollars. And if I come out to BlackBerry, it costs me thirty. And I think that's a huge difference that we need to celebrate. So again, I thank you for your time and just would voice, um, I commend the Commission on um, you know, putting out all the public survey comments and everything like that. So I just thank you again. And if if you want to have a conversation, I'm happy to help in any way possible.
Hey, thank you, Nick. Um, since we don't have any other attendees, um, I would like to go back to our agenda. And was there any other written communications that we received?
So we did receive two written communications that were sent to the Commission, and those will be included in the record as well.
Awesome. Okay. So I guess with that, we can go on to the new business. Uh, we are supposed to be receiving is staff report. Uh, an update on the fiscal twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three city work program items. So with that, I turn it over to Rochelle.
Yes, I will share my screen. All right. So the following is a brief summary and update on the Parks and Recreation Fiscal Year twenty two, twenty three City Work Program Items. The full summaries for each item can be found in Attachment A. The items include the Lawrence Smithy Park Implementation Plan, which is both a current city work program item and a capital improvement project. The Memorial Park Improvements, which is also a current city work program item and capital improvement project. The Dogs Off Leash Area, or DOLA, a current city work program item that will be expanded to work on a standardized process for trial programs and at least two new trials. Senior Strategy, also a current city work program item, which will be expanded to administer a second in-depth senior survey to learn about the senior needs, including aging in place and elder financial abuse. The BlackBerry Farm Golf Course Needs Assessment, also a current city work program item and capital improvement project. And finally, intergenerational engagement, a new city work program item working with the Teen Commission to help with activities across generations, benefiting both seniors and teens. The Parks and Recreation Commission will receive updates on this item. The city work program items were finalized and approved by City Council at their June ninth meeting. Stop is currently developing the project timelines, which will be brought to Commission at a future meeting. And that is the end of my presentation. Um, many of the things I'm sure you guys recognize. There's only one new item, and it's really heavier on the Teen Commission, but of course, we always love your input and will be updating you on those items.
Awesome. Any clarifying questions from anybody on the Commission? Looks like Gopal has a question. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so Rochelle, there are a couple of questions on it, and one is on the the teen one. Maybe I'll go from the reverse order, the intergenerational engage engagement you said. And you said, is it a new citywide program?
And Yes.
Introduced by Teens Commission or by the Council?
No, by by City Council. It's just that they've asked the Teen Commission to help work on it.
Oh, I see. Okay, so that's the one. The other one is uh, on the DOLA, there were two trials. You said start, start two new trials. Did we identify the locations of the park? Or we're going to say we're going to start two, but we haven't identified?
Correct. So with that item, that's what we were directed. City Council changed the objective a little bit to include two trials at least. And so, um, due to the fact that we're kind of three months behind with our work program because it was approved a little later than usual, um, we will be moving forward with trying to figure out what the best process is to figure out those sites.
Okay, I think you partly answered my last other question I had is that all these programs are already approved or already by the Council, correct?
Yes, they were approved at the June ninth meeting.
Excellent. And last one, when do we get an ETA for each other? I know it is very early. But when the staff will work on and say that, but it'll be completed in twenty twenty two, I mean, twenty two, twenty three or beyond, when do we think that we will get some sort of timeline?
So those are the project timelines we'll be working on moving forward. Um, I'm hoping to have them sooner rather than later. They will not be ready in August. I can tell you that right now. Um, because just remember that we are down a director.
I understand, yeah. And the last question is the um, do they, did they give, maybe I haven't attended the City Council, did they give any priority order? Because there are a lot many in all areas, but in what priority, they think that if you don't have a time, I'm sure that you're going to focus on only top three, four kind of. So do we have a priority order as well?
Yes, we do have a priority order, and they have asked us to make sure that we pay attention to their priority. Um, Lawrence Smithy and Memorial are the top priorities. They're both number one. Um, DOLA is next at number six, and this is overall for the whole city work program. Um, the sorry. Um, Senior Strategy is fourteen. BlackBerry Farm Golf Course Needs Assessment is twenty one. And intergenerational engagement is thirty five.
Okay, so this is the overall city priority and what's applicable to Park and Rec. That's why you pulled it out and, okay.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's all the questions I got. Thank you.
Okay, uh, it looks like Chair Shu has some questions.
Uh, yeah, I have two questions. So first one is, I look at the project size. Uh, it shows Lawrence Smithy Park with uh, uh, more than five million budget, but it's medium. But the DOLA, that's only five thousand budget, but the project size is large. So I want to know the definition of project size. What does that mean?
Project size has to do with the staff time that's going to be involved in putting it together. So with the DOLAs, because we know that there's going to be a lot in the order, then the way of actually standardizing a full process, probably putting out a survey to figure out what our first two sites are, all of that is going to take quite a bit of background staff time. Um, whereas Lawrence Smithy is something where there's a consultant that does most of the design and other things, and so the staff time is a little lower.
Okay, thank you. And I have another question regarding the Memorial Park improvements. Uh, I saw there are three items including included in this uh, C I P. One is the pond repurposing. Second is amphitheater improvements. And the third one is a specific plan design. And I think uh, the, in the previous meeting, we already learned only in the Memorial Park, uh, specific plan, we'll, we will have a survey and collect the community input. But for the other two small projects, one is a pond repurposing and the amphitheater improvements. Um, there won't be any survey. Uh, but I just wondering, is it possible to give some update? Uh, maybe, we already, in last, in June meeting, we already got an update report on about the pond repurposing. Um, and for the amphitheater improvements, is there, would there be any uh, update report this year?
Well, it'll depend on when those projects start, and those are in C I P, so it will be up to them and their staffing levels. Um, but this is, the Memorial Park, if you remember, was on last year's city work program. It'll be on this year's, and then it will be on next year's. It's a multiple year process. So depending on what they choose to do first, whether it be the specific plan or the amphitheater, you will get updates from C I P, but it will be kind of up to them and their level of workload as to when those will be.
Okay, so why I ask this question? Because recently, we have the summer concert program at the amphitheater, and I visited it several times. It seems really successful. A lot of people likes it. So I realized the amphitheater improvements may affect uh, our residents a lot, but we don't have a uh, um, community outreach about how to improvement. Uh, I'm just wondering if our improvement will match of the residents what they want. So that's why I hope to get the update of this project, not like we just do all the thing and nobody knows.
Yeah, well, we haven't, they haven't started that project yet, so I'm not sure what their outreach plans are at this time.
Oh, okay, got it. Yeah, so just, we hope to get updated. Thank you. I have no more questions.
Hey, does anyone else have any questions? I just have one clarification question. So from what you had read out, uh, as far as the priorities, Rochelle, it looked like, it looks like you've listed the pro, the, the projects here in the priority order that they're from a Parks and Recs perspective. I know something was sitting, something one and something was something else. But if I was to look at the six projects, um, are they in this, in the order in which they should, they will be implemented? From a Parks and Recs perspective, it's like they will first work on, I mean, the highest priority will be for Lawrence Smithy and perhaps Memorial Park. And then the rest will be, uh, you know, as time depends, as staff is available. Is that how it is?
Yes, so we will start and work through the priorities that City Council approved. And so, yes, Lawrence Smithy and Memorial are number one. However, remember, those are mostly besides our outreach portion and P N R. Those are mostly C I P. So P N R should be able to start on the other one simultaneously.
Okay. Um, also, when, when something is a C I P project, I mean, just, just curious, uh, I think usually it kind of just gets implemented or they get executed, so to speak, and then we get timely updates. So, um, you know, sometimes there's very little opportunity for us to do anything about it after the update. So, uh, similar to the lines on which Chair Shu was asking the question, um, uh, when we come back to, when you guys come back to give us an update, can we have uh, if not a detailed plan, at least a, an approximate, you know, idea of what steps are going to be taken, when, how, like, for example, the pond repurposing, they're going to start the work at this time. You know, they, they must have a schedule. They're going to work on it. And um, can we get that before any work starts? So we don't find out afterwards what has happened?
So I would need to speak with the C I P team, but I'm happy to speak with them about that. As you all know, there are always plans, but construction rarely goes to plan. So I would have to speak with them about what they would like to bring forward.
Okay, um, I can leave the other part for discussion. Um, but if there aren't any other questions and it doesn't look like, uh, anybody else and wants to comment on this, I'd like to open it back up to, there are no attendees raising their hands. I would like to open it back up to the Commission for any discussion on this. Any comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Kumarpun.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair. So is that for all these, I know the staff constraints there, but do we have any additional budget? Again, sorry if I haven't caught up with the Council approvals. Did we have any additional funding for any of these? I know the prioritaries are there, and there is an original budget. Is there any surplus budget we have for? Um, any additional items, Rochelle?
Yeah, so Attachment A should, um, have the estimated budget.
Okay.
Um, along with any budget that may have been expended. So if extra budget was needed, we did get that approved with the project.
Got it. Okay, yeah, maybe I'll check it out. I couldn't check it out. The same problem I have in my computer, so I'll check it out. Thank you. That's the only thing I wanted to just find out what it is. And I think you already answered as part of the question Vice Chair asked about the priorities and not if you depend on someone else, but I'm sure that the people will start moving on, working on other things in parallel. Whether we, we don't need any help from C I P, until then you will start planning your own. That's what I feel, okay? Yeah, that's all. I don't have any other points to discuss at this point.
Does anyone else have any comments? Um, don't see any hands raised. Um, I do have one, um, other, I don't know if this is a request or whether this is a comment, but um, what I would also like to see Rochelle, um, sort of going forward, maybe for all projects, is we have an estimated budget. We have, um, what we spent on a project at any given time, and oftentimes, you know, any construction project, we'll be kidding ourselves if you believe that we will meet that budget, right? There will be, uh, there will be changes. People will come back and say, oh, you know, this didn't happen, supply issue happened, we, whatever happened. There are going to be delays in the project, and there are going to be estimate changes in of the project. Can I make a request that every time such a, such a issue occurs, we may not be able to meet, uh, you know, we might have just had the meeting and then this is, this is obtained, but is it possible for you to forward that information to all of the Commission, just F I I, just for our information? Uh, just so that, you know, we don't want to be, we don't want to find out, like, say, we don't have the August meeting and something, I mean, this is just an example. And then we meet in September, and somewhere along the way, the whole thing was like, you know, double the budget or something happened like that. Not that it will happen that way, but, you know, it's like two months, nobody was, you know, aware, other than what the staff was able to do. So it would be nice to get that type of information, even if that is in an email form, just so we know what's going on.
So any large changes like that, especially budget, have to be approved by City Councils, so they do go to the City Council meetings. Um, we can try to attach agendas from the City Council meetings that are going to have those or the meeting minutes, if that would be easier for you.
Uh, that, that would be useful to know, um, absolutely useful to know. And even, even before it gets to the City Council, you know, if the City Council meeting is like three weeks away, it would be interesting for us to know that, hey, this is going to the City Council because of these changes.
Um, yeah, so I can send it to you once it's made public, but, um, that would mean the agenda would have to be posted. I wouldn't be able to send it before that.
Uh, okay. Uh, so, so you find out something from C I P, which you can't tell us?
Until it's made public. I can't send it to the whole Commission, sorry.
Uh, okay, all right, okay. Looks like Commissioner Kumarpun has something to say.
Yeah, which would be a simple one for Rochelle to do it, since you said I referred the document. And in one of them, in, in the budget allocation, one, the item number thirty five, intergenerational engagement, the budget was twenty K, it is asked for, but allocated is zero. So what does that mean?
Um, so this is actually what was sent before, we haven't gotten a finalized work plan in this form. So what you actually have attached was what was given to City Council for them to approve. Because they approved it, it will now be allocated.
Oh, I see. So twenty thousand, what their request was there, but it will be allocated. Okay, maybe it says zero and I, okay, so that maybe it will get updated. Okay.
Is, is this the only program? Because the others, I'm, yeah, well, okay, I guess the senior strategy also has some.
Yeah, all of the programs are properly allocated and spent on it, except this one. So that's why I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and that's because it's a new item. So it was an item where we had to ask for the money. So when this went to council, it wasn't allocated yet. Whereas the other ones are current items that the money was already allocated when it was approved last year from City Council.
Got it. But since they, Council themselves approved it, means they approve with the budget ask. That means it will be allocated. Got it.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Um, I guess this is not on the agenda, so I can't really talk about the BlackBerry Farm, but just quickly, is the survey done? Will be done soon, right? I guess.
No, that's part of my Director's Update. It's over tomorrow.
It's over tomorrow, okay. All right, um, any other questions, comments, anybody? Everybody's nodding no. Okay, uh, next part of the agenda is that figuring out what we want to do for the August meeting, the next item on the agenda. So what do we want to do for the August meeting? It wasn't agendized last time, so we could not discuss that. So where do we want to start? Rochelle, we just say, what do you think? Or would you have some comment? How do we do this?
Um, well, technically, we agendized this because you did all speak about cancelling the August meeting. It just wasn't put on the agenda last time. So we did agendize it, and if you're all kind of on the same page, you're welcome to just start a motion and we can vote.
Okay.
I will, um, make a motion to cancel the August, um, Park and Rec Commission meeting.
Yeah, I will second it.
Hey, take it away, Jessica.
Oh, wait, I have, I have a question, I guess.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see your hand up. Go ahead.
Well, I just raised it. So, yeah, once the motion was seconded. Um, so I just want to ask Rochelle about the, the, the subjects that we are looking at in the next that we are looking at in the next few months. And, and I just want to confirm that none of those will be, um, prepared or ready to be presented in August.
No, the earliest for any of those would be September.
And what, what items are those?
Well, we're hoping to get you the update on the, um, uh, sorry, Lawrence Smithy information. We're hoping to, I have no idea with the survey results, how long that's going to take. Um, there's an outside consultant involved in that due, so that may even be after September. And then the timelines for the work program, that will be ready by August. Um, so that will hopefully be September also.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Um, and is there, yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Sashi, you're on mute.
Sashi, do you?
Yes, so Jessica, do you want to go around and figure out if anyone has any, uh, you know, take a vote on the motion?
Yes. Commissioner Stanek?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kumarpun?
Uh, yes.
Vice Chair Begore?
Yes.
And Chair Shu?
Uh, yes.
Motion passes with four yes and one absent.
Okay, awesome. Uh, we then move on to staff and commission updates. So we have an update from our acting director Rochelle.
All right, so council has approved extending the remote teleconference meetings through August sixth. Um, since you have canceled your August meeting, uh, we will let you know about September when we send out the information for that.
Do you want to share your screen or?
Oh, I don't have a presentation.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, the final summer concert is this evening at Memorial Park in the amphitheater, six-thirty to eight. So there's still time to get out there. Um, the BlackBerry Farm Golf Course Feasibility Study Survey does close tomorrow. Um, people can find that on Engage Cupertino if you haven't already filled it out. Uh, Shakespeare in the Park will begin Saturday, July twenty-third. Also, at the amphitheater, and performances begin at six P M. Um, for the movies in the park, they will be every Friday in August, eight P M at Creekside Park. And just a couple of staffing updates. The former director of Parks and Recreation, Joanne McGreeney, had her last day on Friday, July eighth. So I will be the acting director until that position is filled. And the city manager, Jim Trup, has resigned. Assistant city manager Diane Thompson is currently the acting city manager. And that's it for me.
Very good. Any updates from anybody, any of the commissioners?
Um, uh, so yesterday, I joined the mayor's meeting. Uh, so, uh, most of the meeting, that's, um, we talked about like the, uh, the housing issue. And for our update, because we have no park, um, commission meeting between, uh, last, uh, between the mayor's meeting in June and the mayor's meeting in July. So I just gave them update of the joint committee meeting about Lawrence Smithy Park. But because, uh, because the time limit, um, they don't have a chance to discuss about that.
All right, looks like Commissioner Stanek has some comments. Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to report that I have been attending concerts in the park, and I've seen Rochelle there, and I've seen some of my fellow commissioners there as well. So, um, it's been a very good turnout, and I think the, the community really enjoys that. I also was there on July fourth, um, for the concert from ten-thirty to noon. So, um, that one was not, well, there were more people at the beginning of the concert than at the end. So that's not necessarily the direction you want to go. I think that particular band, um, you know, there was a lot of leftover families and kids right at the beginning, and the band probably was not the best choice for the families. It was, um, might have been better for an older crowd. So it might have been better for them to be on Thursday night, just coming on that. I, um, there was a, a Zoom meeting on the inclusive playground, and I attended that. There was also a Zoom meeting for BlackBerry Farm Golf Course options, as well as the open house was just this last Monday. And I did attend the open house down there and walked the course. And there were, I don't know, Rochelle probably has the numbers, maybe thirty people there. And, um, you know, more questions, it seems that people pretty much have their opinions. Um, they, they know how they think they'd like to see this. Um, and it's, it may be one or the other. Uh, doesn't seem like there's too many people that are undecided, but we'll see. I'm looking forward to seeing the survey and, um, getting the feedback on that. So that's all I have to report. Thanks.
Sashi, you're on mute, yeah.
If no one has, and does anyone have anything else to report on, I guess?
No.
If not, that brings us to the end of the meeting, and I think that's the first time ever.
Um, we do need to get commissioner attendance for the September mayor's meeting.
Ah. Right, so this time it was, uh, so Jessica, who's been around? We're just doing a circle over everybody, right? So who goes to get to go next? Um,
So, so Sashi, we're June, and then Chair Shu did July, and then I have Commissioner Swami for August.
Okay, and then September, we need somebody to volunteer.
Yeah, I, I can go in September or stand over. I, I'm ready. I, I can go. I should be back by end of August. So I can, I can take September.
Thank you. So it'll be September fourteenth at five P M.
Okay, yeah, since we may not have any, that may be a very simple update I will make, because we may not have any meeting in August. So in September, I just maybe listen to the other stuff, the commission updates, um, commission's update, I can share it. Sure.
Thank you.
All right, I just, just the fact that, um, you know, talking about mayor's meeting, one of the, uh, comments that came up when I attended the meeting in June was that they would like to see more interaction between the commissions. So just like we did a, um, you know, with the plan and the rec, uh, the bike pad and the planning commission, we'd like to see more joint meetings. I guess we have to figure out when and how and why. But, uh, it would be nice to have more of a interaction rather than, you know, we go to these mayor meetings, we're just commenting on what we do, and some of them want to know how, how do we participate and actually, um, give their input from their perspective. So something for us to think about. Okay, uh, with that, I believe I can adjourn this meeting, yes? So in, on behalf of our chair, who, uh, just like me, was having issues with her, uh, with her computer, I am going to adjourn this meeting at six oh eight. Thank you, everybody, for participating.
Congratulations, you guys. Great meeting.
Thank you.